Well, start with the budget.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, regardless, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to our modern budget workshop. We have a couple of updates from the town manager that will start the. So we'll start with approving tonight's agenda. Uh, which is old business, large budget workshop. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda at Virginia. So I have a first, I have a second, we'll start.
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna start with, uh. Olivia's on her way, she's gonna, um, we'll start with the updates from the town manager, Nicole, if you want.
Uh, under one of your packets, you have a report that looks like this. And on the report, it says Royal Pump and Well Company. So if you all remember, we had to get our wells revitalized, we applied for grants, we got the grant, we got the company, the company came out, they looked at our well. This is the report from that for well four. So all in all, and we'll go through the report, but all in all, well four is up and running. It's not physically running for the town, but it is active, we can keep it, it pumps water, it's got a hundred and eighty gallons per minute that it can produce, which is a lot. Um, there was a valve that needed to be replaced, um, a, what they call a nipple that was on the pump that had a hole in it that was putting water back into the well, so it wasn't going anywhere. Um, this report goes in detail and talks about just what was done. Um, and you'll see some pages have dates and times or timestamp and water level and discharge rate. So water level, um, is, um, where the water is. And then as it pumps down, it gets, it goes further and further down. So the fifty-five will go eventually to seventy-four feet because it's at seventy-four feet. Um, is where it stops and at seventy-four feet, it's producing a hundred and eighty gallons per minute static. So that's, it's really good. Um, what the process now is to get, um, VDH, which they already have the report. I've emailed James, they're gonna review the report and just, um, they'll have to come and do some inspections on their own. Um, there might be some things that we have to fix or what have you, um, then I believe the grant money will take care of that. But, um, so we'll, I'll keep working with James to figure out what else needs to be done. Um, in the report, we have an existing pump, which is considered to still be usable. Um, it may need to be replaced within two to four years. My recommendation is we keep an eye on it and replace it in year three. Um. It talks about replacing, um, they had to replace a three-inch, um, riser pipe, uh, which was corroded, um, so they fixed that. And then, let's see. Um, it talks about the testing, um, and the yield and what it did. So they did several tests for the pump. And then on the last, close to last page, um, the conclusion. So the overall condition of the well and pump are in good condition. Um, in the review of his, of this inspection, we would recommend formal, to recommend formal contact to be made with the, the health department. The request to, um, be returned to service as soon as possible. So I've sent them this report, I've talked to them, they have to review it and do their inspections. Um, and they'll probably, the AB and VDH will probably have one more, a few more tests done before they can actually, um, make it an active well for us in the town. But this is great, great news for us. Um. So our well can produce a hundred and eighty gallons per minute. We are capped by VDH at seventy-five gallons per minute. We could ask them to review all of this again and raise that number. But even at seventy-five gallons per minute, we, we will not be, we'll be making revenue, we won't be losing it and we'll be paying for a lot of, of water. Um, but the idea is that maybe we could raise that number, since our well does produce a hundred and eighty, that we raise that number. And with the water authority, only utilize them as supplemental, but a way that if our well can supply the town, then only use them if something happens to our well or our tank, and then their system cuts on. And I don't know how the system works, I need to get an understanding on that, but this was the priority. The reason why it's capped at seventy-five gallons per minute is because our tower only holds sixty thousand gallons. If we can, i- it may be that we are able to promise this connection to stay put with the water authority and utilize them. And, you know, obviously, building a tank is millions of dollars, so that's something that is down the road. I don't know that we'll ever do that, but we could save money and do it. I don't know how much it costs, it's a lot. Um, but this is, I mean, this is good, we can kind of get back to where we need to be for this. Um, additional, so he, I, I just highlighted on notes for myself to talk about. Um. He, Rob, Mr. Royal does suggest that we do an alternate pump size when we go to replace the pump. Because that pump size is exactly correct for what our well needs. Um, and there's nothing wrong with it, but if we went to a slightly smaller pump, we would get a better yield. So, um, when we do that, he's recommending we do a smaller pump. Um, also would like to point out that in this, um, evaluation, they evaluated that there was an eight-inch line at one point. Um, and then that eight-inch line was relined with a six-inch pipe, um, concrete cemented and put in there. So that your eight-inch, your six-inch line is gonna reduce how much water comes out at times, so. But it's still plenty of water.
You're recommending that we go back to doing eight-inch line?
No, I just was telling you that we, we did have, there was some, there was a lot of talk about eight-inch lines in the town and six-inch lines and this. It, what happened was from the well, it, it is a six-inch line.
So there's no point in putting eight anywhere, because if it's.
Well, you can do a, you, it, that would have to be someone who knows how to do the pipes, but you could. We're not connecting, sorry, to the well, it's already connected unless we have to replace that.
So was the smaller line, maybe, I don't know, is the smaller line put in because our water tower only hold sixty thousand? Was it done slowly flow?
No. I don't, well, I'm not gonna say no, cuz I don't know, he doesn't even know when it was put in. I'm sure there's a record around here somewhere that talks about why it was done. Um, but he doesn't know. We just know that there's, it's a six-inch line.
I'm probably relining our pipes. We consider a lot of it to, uh.
Sewer pipes, because of the, yeah.
Would we reline them because they have a lot of.
Yeah.
Oh, it, the water line, the.
No.
We don't ever do.
You would replace them.
If there's an option, anything six inches above you can, you can use, there's, there's a lining that you, you know. If you've got, if you've got a lot of the ripification. But that's, that's for the engineer to determine.
We're trying to guess why we would have done it, okay?
Yeah.
If VDH agrees, we'll boil finish work that they're suggesting that needs to be looked at and possible replacements for valves and that sort of thing.
Yes, they'll do that and we'll, we will work with them to come up with a maintenance agreement contract, um, for you all to review. And they can monitor our wells and, and do those for us.
And then VDH will cancel the pause.
Yeah, once it comes back online, they'll cancel the pause, so a two-year project became.
A few months.
That would pass into our case.
We are.
Real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome question, but I mean, um, so theoretically, if we were to have the cap lifted, would that one well be able to supply all the water to town residents wherever they get biased water from us without needing supplemental water unless something happens?
Um, from what we're looking at the calculations, yes. Um, but it may be that we supplement a little bit.
We have an idea, uh, we know what we've got that we're servicing right now. How far above what we're servicing. We'll start having problems soon.
Um, that, we would have to do some calculations, but this well is Purdue, I mean, a hundred and eighty gallons per minute is a lot of water. Kelly, we did a.
That's more than.
What was our calculation, I'm sorry, I'm.
So at, at seventy-five gallons a minute, that's a hundred and eight thousand gallons a day, which you take all that numbers out there, it's over three million gallons a month. Um, are, we are currently purchasing under two million gallons a month from the water authority. So it's sufficient. There is that you do have to keep the sixty thousand gallons in the tank, and then they also require typically, I think, a twenty percent reserve that you have to be producing above that amount, if my understanding is correct of what he told us.
Yep.
But it seems as though we would have sufficient, even pumping at seventy-five gallons per minute seems as though we would have sufficient water for our current, to meet our current needs.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't have any comments, but I do have a question. Did he actually find a problem with the well? Because my concern is he shoots those numbers I wouldn't put now, but I'm the one who would turn the well off after three or four days because it was running out of water.
Right, so.
So cycling.
It, but it was because there were valve issues, a hole in the nipple, the transducer, the, uh, it needed to be rebooted. The system that's checking the water level, level needed to be rebooted. There were a few things that took place.
Okay.
Um, at a rate of, what was his last, he left it on um, for a whole day and, um, he was, he left it on for a whole day. And basically, even at sixty-six feet, he was still producing a hundred and eighty gallons per minute all the way down to seventy-four feet, and it started at nine forty-five is what I'm looking at AM, and went to five PM. And it was still producing that, they did a recovery and the recovery came back pretty quickly, um, to fill the, the well up, so. There was a.
Last time we had the water quality check.
A water quality check? So they, when the well was up and running, Hunter would does checks and throughout the town for the water. So we won't put this well back online until all of that is taken care of through VDH. We would have to test it, put the chemicals in it and make sure the water is good before they would turn it back on into the system.
So we still have that hanging out there.
The water quality?
Yeah.
So VDH, that's what they'll do.
I understand what you're saying, all I'm saying is, till we can get clearance from VDH and tested the well and all of that, then we don't have a bottom line.
Yeah, not right now until they review the report.
They verify, then that's the report.
In the vast, that's, that's not more than.
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone will win the well.
We have to test it, if, we have to. We have to test it three or four times a month, our water, and send reports every month to VDH for our water. We also have to send a withdrawal report and all of us.
Water, yeah, is, is borderline acceptable. And I want to make sure enough the water we're gonna produce is a heck of a lot better than that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
The good, actually, so there are amendments that have to be.
Right.
Um. Louisa meets those standards.
Yeah. Well, I've, I've looked at, that's what I'm doing.
All I know is, is your well has been tested, even when it wasn't producing, they still have to take a raw water sample and submit that monthly, and it has to pass that raw water sample for, uh, all the contaminants.
Right.
And you've got the maximum level contaminants, so minimum level contaminants, so. We're, as far as I know, you're exactly right.
Okay. So we don't see it being a problem coming up with VDH coming out to test, we're not afraid that there's gonna be something that creeps up on these?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so at all, less than we've sabotaged.
I mean, water tastes so much better when we have it built, in my opinion, but I'd have preference for mineral, mineral water.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should bottle the mineral water and solve this.
So does anybody else have questions?
I have one, it might be to.
That's okay. I don't know, but.
No, that was, why should I make that a question? Does the water, the water tower, okay? Does all the water go into the tower and goes out?
We have to keep that tower.
He's taking his, he had no.
Wait, that is a reserve tower that you have to keep water in that tower, it has to fill up.
It does not go into the tower and then go out.
Now, it fills the tower up and when the tower is getting low, water will go up in the tower, but.
But the water.
But it won't. It doesn't, it doesn't like go in it and then come back out.
That's what I was thinking.
But the water goes to the.
I don't understand all the concepts of.
The well pushes the water through the lines and then there's a, um, total dynamic head that is numbers that are all put together and they help get the water where it needs to go.
So it's no water in the tower right now?
Yes, there's water in the tower.
Has water in the tower, the well is still down.
The county water.
County water.
Oh.
Yeah, and that well, um, we were looking at, I mean, that tower, we were reading at like thirty-three percent, but it's because something had knocked the system loose, so we rebooted the system. James, Hank and James, the, the guy that works for White Oak Electric, rebooted the system and it spurred it up to seventy-five percent full. Um, so we turned it down a little bit because you don't want it to overflow, but we're gonna keep it at seventy-five to eighty.
I, I also wanted to say, I went to the town hall maybe for Dwayne Adams.
Yes.
And this thing of Amazon going into the reservoir. Isn't that gonna really cut into everybody's water or?
It's going, it's taking water from the James River.
That, no, not the, not the one that they're proposing for here, the one in, um.
Kentucky Springs.
No, no, that's coming from the reservoir. The other one, which is Shannon Hill, that's coming from the James River. I was at the meeting, so this is what I'm, I heard. And if you read, um, Camp, Louisa Tammy's report, it says it comes from the reservoir. But the water from Shannon Hills is gonna come from James if they pass it. Now, Wayne Adams is, no, but he's coming to speak with us at our meeting next week.
Did you get back to him?
I've had enough of him.
Wants champagne, he's got to do his thing, right?
Well, they still met one week.
Well, the one thing he did say is he don't do two things, that's medical and HRAs. So I don't appreciate anything he comes and says. Now, it all did not.
It's still, which is your question, I, I think, if our well is up and running, then whatever's coming from the zoom isn't gonna have any effect on town.
It's not coming from James River, because this.
Our well is the, what is, is not coming from, so the county pulls water and from the reservoir. We're pulling water from a well.
Okay.
So if our well.
But if it comes down to this eight, whatever this Amazon thing, it's gonna pull from the reservoir also, which we got six other ones that are pulling from the reservoir, so that would be three pulling from the reservoir and then the one from James River.
And then whatever's upstream, you don't know what else is upstream.
And then if they go in and say something about giving a well or doing a supply or whether it's, I mean, it could drop things, we don't know what's gonna happen. So, you know. We do have a little girl that was at that meeting, I would love for her to come down and talk to us, Savannah Walker, she works with the, uh.
She's a manager.
She works with the, um, data centers and she, she had Dwayne Adams, he didn't wanna talk to her. She was so smart, so, um, she's got a technology, something on Facebook, join it, you'll learn a lot. She's very, very smart, I've known her since she was a baby, so. Um, and I was shocked that that was her. So anyway, um, yeah, she knows her stuff. So that might, I mean, I, we're getting off, well, I think we're on board, she's gonna talk about that, but, but, uh, it, it's, um, it's a lot to think about, I mean, is that what we want? I don't.
Well, that's why source water is important, and I'm gonna introduce, um, Betty from, uh, New York Royal Water. She is our new source water person, who's gonna help us come up with a source water plan. And, uh, she, that's something we have, uh, need to do. And, you know, it's, um, something that all municipalities do, and the first thing we did, we really focused on our, our leads. And now we worked on this, you know, saving our well, now we gotta come up with our source water protection plan. We're gonna protect our source water, we also are gonna try to, you know, come up with an additional source water if we can. So we have a backup, it would be nice, and we may not at the luxury of, but we're gonna work on it. We, right now, we're using Louisa as our backup wire plan. Um, and so, you know, if you have any questions about source water, um, or, or protecting our source water, she's the person to ask, if anybody has questions.
Before we go to that, though, Nicole, what have you done, if you are?
With that report, yes.
Okay, so, and I think because of your question, I think we can move into the source water conversation. So Betty, if you have any information, you could, could, should that concern, that specific concern of what happens if these data centers start sucking up all the source water? Well.
As we all know, I think it's very important for you to have a backup plan. Um, what's it, backup plan to the backup plan to the backup plan, uh, with things that are, you know, going on. And, you know, things that are happening within our firm. So the first thing that I would want to do is to see about well number five. That's well number five is already existing, um, for you all, and, and VDH does have, um, information on well number five. So I would see what, well, you know, what's well number five, we can get that started and to see why it's closed in the beginning. And then look for some funding that's available out there and get those type of, you know, um, research done first, then probably come back with, want to probably form, um, a committee um, for, you know, for, to work with, with the source work. Yeah, beautiful, um, for a committee, and be sure to get, um, everything, the testing and everything, all of the information, all the data that is blew with that particular well, and as to why it's closed.
I don't know, I know they spent forty thousand on something. But they didn't work.
Supposedly it was closed because they spent, this is just hearsay, I didn't work for the town then and I haven't found any documentation, but from what I was told by past council members, it was closed because they spent roughly about forty thousand in it and it only produced like five thousand gallons per month. So they finally, like, something happened and I think was when they finally opted to just stop. They kind of felt, I guess, like it was a bottomless pit, that they weren't.
You would have to, uh.
You know.
This kind of how well four went down, so maybe, you know, maybe is something we can say, but I don't know, but.
There's word for word in this records, you know, out there, that is already available to, you know, us. And, um, I would stop, they have those lists too, we're gonna deal with that.
Or, or is that two hundred feetish? I think it's like two eighty or three hundred.
Yes.
Is that what is reported in the ball?
Of course.
So did you guys get this for sixty-five percent?
Yeah. The well.
Yeah.
Okay.
They wanna know the depth of the well?
They did, they did. They was.
Guys, let's have one conversation at a time, please.
The final depth was reported at two hundred feet.
Or three hundred?
Okay.
Yes, so I'll really, you know, start with number five, to see what, you know.
So it should, those passes.
What, what's, you know, what the data is on there, because that's already been collected. Um, and then also.
There's nothing to lose, everyone gains, right?
And so I'll start with that, you know, if I have to do that, if, oh, you know, that would be.
Guys, let's have one conversation at a time. Betty is speaking about row five, so let's hold off on the other conversations.
So all we would do is, just basically, I'll go to, um, VDH to have contact there. And actually, I had a topic in this morning, and, um, and then we get with the, um, GRS person too. And then work on some funding to see, you know, what you are qualified for in that area.
Okay.
So we had six wells, correct?
Yeah, but they're not operational.
So one, two, and three, absolutely a no.
Three and six are absolutely a no, spring was closed. Well five does show that it's been abandoned, and now if it's not closed, cemented closed, I don't know if VDH would open it back up and.
Basically.
Four.
There it is. What about the well that's over at the, um, Walton Park?
That's what we're talking.
That's, that's.
Well five.
That's well five.
So she's gonna talk to VDH and, and just load and see how it was abandoned, if it's just a paperwork abandonment or if, you know, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah, but you know, people come and go, you know, in these, and someone new may be in there now that would, you know, have, you know, be able to help us. Be with, be with, so I'll start with that. We're gonna help with you.
Awesome, any other questions for Betty before we move on?
Um, source water protection plan, what else does it involve, like, what is the protection?
If, let's say if something happens and your well number four gets contaminated, um, let's say some part, truck over there or something, or, you know, that gasoline got leaked into, you know, your groundwork. Um, and if you were have, you know, get some issues by being, that being tested, then if it does come up with a, it's sourced, you will have well five to go to. And then, of course, you want to be able to, you know, you're still gonna continue to have your relationship with Louisa Camp, uh, you know, as a back.
Yeah.
So it's still to be independent, you know, for you to be sustainable with your own source water, you do more than this. And then I wanna see what, what, what about the spring?
I don't know.
Let's see what that's about, let's see.
Okay, cuz I don't, we, you'd have to show her.
We don't.
It's all, we're, uh.
If there's, is there no water there anymore?
No, it had water.
It has water, but they pulled it.
Yeah, they would have that.
Yeah, I told them that, you know, it was something they used historically, but they haven't used it for a really long time.
And they, and VDH on the report that I have says that they've.
That we can't use it anymore.
Removed it.
They write it, okay.
From a source.
And I think it wasn't, you know, a, like, illegal use, you know, like.
No, it had a, it was temporary, I think, so it was three and seven.
Okay, yeah, I, I said I didn't know if it was like an VDH source or if it was just some people tacked into, you know, I mean, I don't think it was a, an official source of water or something.
Well, you know, things change, you know, so we'll just, you know, the AMA, you know, still, you know, checking out to see, you know, revisiting.
To see.
Right, yeah.
Emergency.
I mean, you know, um, excuse me, the other thing we want to talk about is, you know, the net goes into emergency planning.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something does, um, uh, if you have a fire here, what, you know, what, what is that, what is that? You know, source, so you still wanna have a backup, so. Right, so all those things will be covered.
Okay. Good, thank you. We're gonna go back to.
We're gonna go back to Nicole. You had a slideshow prepared?
Yeah. I'm gonna record the screen to the network. So I've just prepared a small. Um, set of slides to talk about, kind of give everyone an idea of what we've been doing. For last year and few months. Um, so our water projects, we have water leaks repairs, well four, new lines, water line replacement, asset management. Estimate each year the amount of houses that will need water, new and existing. So we've gone through, talked to Hank, worked with Hank, Michelle, Kelly as well. About um what were the needs over the last year? The needs, the number one need was to fix the leaks. That was our number one priority. Hands down, fix the leaks so we know where we are. We're losing water. So that's what we did. So the budget was a hundred fifty eight thousand dollars. Um, along with that, you pull in sewer, the number one fix there was the manhole at the lagoon, okay? So we fixed the leaks. We have a few leaks left out here. Uh, there's one on Mineral Avenue. We're not sure. We just have to. Start digging. We gotta work with Hank and and see where that is. We know where it is, but get it on the schedule. Um, the other thing was, once we fix the leaks, what's our source water? So that's that's the phase we're in right now. We're in source water. Um, well, four, we know will be up, it'll be up and running and we'll be able to use it. Um, the next one are new lines. New lines are not something that you can just go and do. You have to plan these out. That goes in with your um water line replacement. So whether it's a new line that we're laying for a house. Or um a water line replacement or asset management. This is where the Bowman contract came into play. Because we were gonna look to them to put everything on the GIS, which we already have the GIS. Because we have all of our meters. So we were gonna get them to do um and help build our asset management plan out. And in that, you can take notes and talk about when you post your water line, when you repaired it. So we have not moved forward with that because it's forty thousand dollars and I don't think that it was something that we could. Visibly say that we needed to do at this moment, knowing that we had other things that needed to be done. So that's still there and I think um. We're gonna try to utilize some other sources to help do that. Um, so we have to come up with a plan of what are the major lines that need to be replaced? Along with what are is the estimate estimated growth in the town? I don't see that it can be any more than a few houses plus whatever the putt has, if that ever comes to um be. So the next important thing besides the well and and, you know, establishing what the actual contract is with the water authority. Establishing how the well turns on and it works with our vault and how our we're saving money because we're using our own water. That's obviously the priority. But in line with that is our lines and our replacements. Because if our lines bust, like we had one last week, they're just crumbling and they're at the year that they're gonna do it. The next five years, they're just gonna start crumbling until we replace them. I think one line. Is, I forgot where it is, on Tollersville maybe, that has like so many repairs on it and we need to replace the whole line.
And it needs to be upgraded cuz it's way too small for the amount of houses on it.
And that's the other thing. The you have your um pipe, your size of your pipe that you lay. Is what you can, the amount of how homes that you can have on the pipe. So we're gonna have to do that. Well, that costs money. So these are important things that we need to look at. What's the worst line to the least worst line and what needs to go on the schedule? Um, estimated each year of houses new and existing. We have houses in the town of Mineral that they're um. They're either their wells are going dry or they wanna just hook up to town water because their drain field is going. So they need to fix their drain field. They don't get town water, so they need to do both. Or or we have, you know, some that their drain field is failing and they have town water. So they're just gonna hook up to the sewer. Um, but they can't hook up to the sewer unless they have town water. So if I have, if you have a house that has a well and the drain field is failing, then they would have to do both. So looking at what that looks like and taking notes when people call in about where they what they're asking for. Um. Um, general projects. So under this, you have Seventh Street, Piedmont, Mineral Avenue is replace a bad line. Um, Tollersville line, that's the one we're, I think, talking about. Uh, replace it to with a six inch line, possibly upgrade it. And then Sixth Street Mineral, run a new six inch line to feed lots down Sixth Street to six twenty-three. So coming from the back end, I think up, right? So from like from Seventh Street that are Piedmont up Sixth Street um to do that. Um, so these are some of the things that we're looking at because, you know, we have to start preparing our town to be able to do this. People are gonna need to hook up to water or we're gonna need to open up the manhole. If they clear out Sixth Street, there's a manhole right there. If someone puts a house there, where are they getting water from? And as a town, we have a public utility. So these are some of the things that we have to account for. Um, sewer projects. So the lagoon manhole replacement, the manhole was ordered. It's in the shop. Um, and right now, we're looking at needing to clear um the area for the manhole and install it. And get that installed. That was put on hold because. One, we were doing water leaks and we vaulted manhole and it never got fixed. And then we got the letter from VDH. So at this point, until we can get to a place where we have done everything for VDH. And what needs to be done for our source water, this was not a priority. Um, and so it got pushed back a little. Um, Hank came and asked me about it and we had a discussion about it. So we'll get it back on um the project list once we get information from VDH. Um, we need to look at other manholes that have the infiltration. So most of these are in areas that are wooded, like Sixth Street has a manhole that's in the woods. So we'll have to go on our map. We have a map. Somewhere in my office that has the manholes and what they look like. It has fire hydrants where they are. It has. We have meters are on GIS. So we'll eventually get all of these on the GIS system. Um, but those are the ones that we need to look at right now and analyze and inspect and fix. Because we do have, um, you know. An expense where the rainwater is going to the sewer and the sewer is metered at the lagoon. And it is an expense to us. It's not a huge expense, but it is an expense.
Um, tell you that I recorded last year, there was like six, eight thousand. I remember that was using calculations I was given by. Royal Water, which are typical calculations that are used, but we were. Nicole was able to get specific information on our town and how it's metered. And it's not that much. It's trying to, we want like six, eight hundred dollars here and there, so.
It's just where we were told that that was eight thousand.
Right, right. And that's.
So it's not that.
Right. That is, are the calculations. We're gonna see this in a minute. Oh, okay. I just know it's gonna show up. And I was saying that my numbers were wrong based on, you know, they were math is right, the calculations. In the formulas were wrong, okay?
Okay. So Eighth Street Piedmont is where is, I was just discussing where a sewer line. The gentleman's drain field is failing and we're having to figure out the best option for the sewer line. The the number one correct option is to lay the sewer line and make the fall go to the manhole. And that way, other houses can connect to that sewer line when needed. That is the way that it's should be done and needs to be done, but there is a cost to that. And so we're we're looking into these options and the costs. Um, so research analysis on water. We currently are reviewing the water numbers, consumption versus build. Once we get the well active, the numbers build and consumption from Louisa. The Water Authority will decrease and this will allow for the town to earn revenue from their water. This is a um, Kelly put together some numbers for us. Um, this, these are gallons purchased. This is for a twelve month period. You can see the amount that was purchased and what we were billed. Down here for the total year, twenty-five million gallons of water at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the year. If that well comes back up and we're able to even cut that in half. It would be twelve million gallons that we would purchase from Louisa, which would be enormous amount of revenue in the town's pocket. So just that little bit of money will help us. It should be more than that, but we were just playing safe. A research analysis on sewer. Currently, we are reviewing the sewer numbers metered to metered output versus build. This is, this is metered at the lagoon location. So everything is metered. It's at the lagoon. Our individual residents are not metered sewer. The town takes whatever water consumption that the house has. And also bills the sewer the same consumption. That's not a bad thing because most of the time and the majority of the time, your sewer, your wa- you have to have water to have sewer and have to go down the drain. So your your numbers are off and they're skewed and we're floating numbers because we're not metering it. But we're doing it in a way that we're just using whatever they're consuming is what we're building with your sewer. Let's see. So this, this is a report and Kelly put together these numbers for us. Um, these are, they're dated numbers, gallons billed to the town of Mineral by the Water Authority. Gallons billed to the town of Mineral customers, how many customers billed. And then the column that says gain loss of gallons, gain loss of revenue. So if you look at the last um date, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We got, we were billed six hundred and eighty-two is what we billed to our customers. And we're at like a forty-six thousand dollar loss. At i- if you take into consideration where we're not charging for water, like this building, the fire department, et cetera. Then we're looking at maybe a forty thousand dollar difference, which accumulates to six hundred bucks. So for one month. So it fluctuates. Some months, we're getting credits. Some months, we're not and we're losing water.
Yeah, what is that with January to February? It's like crazy.
Are losing sewer. Uh, this is, I'm, this is where your, I think, is your rainy season when the water. And the snow melt and the, thank you, Kelly. Kelly and I worked hard on this today.
Oh, yeah.
She put all the numbers together over from the.
You're gonna see your 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 infiltrations in the sewer. You're gonna see the numbers go up in the spring.
Right.
And then fall due to the snow and rains.
Yeah.
But it happens about a thousand a month. And that's just, you know, way less than than the other numbers have been estimated. So. It's still a loss, but it is nothing like what happened.
So I just wanted to give, this is just, this was just to give everyone an idea of what this looks like. And we are doing a lot of work in the office on water and sewer and sewer wasn't neglected. It just wasn't the place where we need to focus because we need to have revenue and we need to get our water and our wells, so.
Any questions for the town manager regarding the slideshow?
Of the. Still work for the manhole. That we were told that cost me. It was a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to fix it.
The estimated cost was a hundred and sixty. We purchased the manhole. And th- these are based on us working with Central Virginia Contractors and we get a quote from them and they go and do the work. We're working with them through more of an hourly um job. So as he works on the job and they go and do stuff. These um will get billed by them, but he he gave us a quote. The manhole itself is like fifty-five thousand dollars.
It's not like it's happened five years ago.
In the last year.
Remember we were told something about five years ago.
This is, this.
So everything that was said at the last meeting, some of it was not.
Well, some of this is kind of all because the lagoon thing, Tommy, other people have been talking about this since before I've been on this. But I just learned about the lagoon thing a year ago and I've been working on it since last spring.
We.
And since she started, but it could have been going on a hundred years before that. I don't know.
Right, but I. Confused, confused at the last meeting. And.
So I don't know how long it went on before we started. She started in April.
You know, I went home and I told my husband, I said, see, y'all caused us to have a whole life.
So we don't know how long that lagoon thing's been going.
So give us all the last answer.
Now, um, Alex, Jared, before we go there, there were still some questions. Dave had a question.
Purpose of this meeting is to set aside budget for water and sewer repairs. So. How long is it gonna take for us to put a number on water and sewer projects so that we can establish a budget?
Well, you have a budget and the budget number that we came up with, the ninety thousand dollars is also in conjunction with the ninety thousand dollars in grant money that we get. And the reason why we have not put out all these projects is because, one, we have a letter from VDH that we cannot run any new lines. We cannot do any of that until we got source water. So the. The way that we ran these numbers were if we had to do repairs, if we had to do a major replacement on the line. We set that money aside until we could figure out what was going on with the well. That is a major project. The well is now, we know is functional and it will produce and allow us to gain revenue. Which now, going into the second part of your budget season or even next year, you can set aside money to do a line replacement. Or you can set aside money to do something. Line replacements are not cheap. They're expensive. And this year, right now, at this point, until we get the water up, was not a focal point unless there was a a project that is in need of a line.
My question, let me clarify. Sewer and water projects. I'm not talking about new stuff down the line. I'm talking about fixing and repairing sewer and water. This budget meeting is to establish a budget for that. If we don't know the numbers, how can we establish the budget? Please, can you give me an answer on when these sewer and water water project repairs? What the cost is going to be?
I.
Can establish budget?
I can't tell you the cost because I don't have a quote and I don't do that. I.
Add that number in.
I established the number for the water budget.
The hospital is uh, we're gonna stop now with the hostility or I'm gonna reset.
Hostility. I'm asking questions.
And you were given an answer that is incredible.
At the last meeting, she told us that she had a hundred and sixty thousand set aside after the work.
No, it'd be not, I mean, that's sixty thousand was approved by the council to replace a man.
Thanks.
And then we had to replace water leaks, fix holes. We had to have a source water. So that money got re-appropriated and spent to keep water flowing to our residents. Priority number one. What the town manager just said to you, and I think everybody at this table heard it. We can't start to put a number on these projects until we know that the well is sustainable and viable. So that's step one. Because that's gonna generate. We can't do any of the other projects until the well is functional.
Ron, isn't this meeting to establish a budget for sewer and water repairs?
This is a workshop to know that we're putting a plan in place to maintain our water system and keep it functional.
May I?
This is a sewer water budget workshop.
Right.
Some of them.
So we can't, we don't have a budget, and so we have source water. So you need to allow the staff to do their job and get the source water up and running. And and she answered it.
No, that source water doesn't have anything to do with the repair.
It does because they just make some income.
I don't know.
To do the repair.
But.
We can't. Something if we don't know what it is, we don't.
May, may I? May I?
Excuse me, I think it says mayor on my name tag. I conducted the game. Blair.
Okay, um, little more clarification from what I'm understanding and from having to deal with federal budget. And I'm dumbing it down, hopefully, for people to understand. So I'm gonna refer to some of the things that we've done in federal budget. And what we can try to do here. The budget has been approved, okay? So what we're, what the whole point of this meeting besides having, uh, understanding what's going on. What we we appropriated ninety days of the uh, to be able to use over the next ninety days. Um, what part of this meeting to do is to look what has been approved and see what we can move from one location to another. In order to make these. Uh, give me a minute. Fixes when it comes to the water, okay? So, right now. What the main goal is, is to get the water running out of well four. So any money that we find in the budget is going to go for that. And as soon as well four is up and running, we will be able to start fixing what needs to be fixed. Or as well, not or, but at the same time, if there is a leak. That is affecting us because it's going to affect the Louisa County Water Authority. Hank will make sure that it gets fixed, but at the same time, we need to make sure well four is up and running. So that Louisa County cannot come back and go, you're buying too much water. I understand where you're coming from. But. Having to deal with continued resolutions for the last, I don't know how many years in the federal government. You have to go slowly, unfortunately. Yes, we have approved our budget. On, uh, it's not like a C R, but we can appropriate ninety days and make sure things get done. We can look and see what we can move around on this budget.
I understand your question.
Before you comment, so to elaborate a little bit more on what Blair just said. And to clarify what all of this documentation is showing us tonight. The well can be revitalized with twenty six thousand is what he's estimating.
Yeah, he, he invoices twenty six thousand dollars. That's part of a forty five thousand dollar grant that we have. If something else comes up during this time, we could still utilize that grant. I cannot do that until James and Jared and Azar look at this report and review it in their office and come out and review our well. We have to have money in case it's more than the forty five thousand dollars to be able to spend to fix whatever else needs to be fixed. The second part of the grant money is for the P E, which is the engineer part. And that is if there's a plan in place and they say that we have to build or add or do something. That we have that forty five thousand dollars to do these recommended fixes. I don't know that we're gonna need that, but we might. When you get grant money, you have to pay that money first and then it gets reimbursed to you. It, you may not, it may be more than the grant money and that comes out of your pocket.
So. To help make your point. We can't fix any of these other issues until the well is up and running. So trying to put the cart before the horse means we're gonna run over the horses.
I understand what Dave is saying.
I do.
He wants me to give him a quote number to say, can we plan this and how much money do you need? And I understand that and I've asked for quote numbers and I've gotten high quote numbers that I keep looking at and saying, I, I wanna do it for cheaper. What else can we do? And I haven't put those in. They're not in because some of the numbers to me are not acceptable right now. They're quotes. That's all they are. Until we can look at what really needs to happen. And I can't do that when I know I have a well that's out here that needs to be fixed so the town can have water. That project stays. And if I need to fix it, then I get a quote and I get a couple of quotes and I look at them and I reappropriate those money and ask for appropriation. That's the safest way to do that.
Ron, can I clear?
Sure.
We're talking apples and oranges. Getting the water system working, what you're just watching and just been explaining. Is a priority. We know that. But. Sewer and water repairs. Whether we start them or not. Are a priority on a different level because we have to know. The council has to know how much money we need to spend. Doesn't mean we're gonna spend the money. Just means we need to know how much we need to spend here. When you establish a budget. That doesn't mean you're gonna spend the budget. It means that's what you, you think is going to happen. Sewer and water repairs are what we think we need to do, but we don't have a fixed number for them. But we should have a, a target so that we can say as part of the budget, this is what we need to do. And fixing the well and getting it functional and getting revenue from it, that's all great. It's nice to know for the overall budget that we're making money from it. But it does not address what we're gonna have to do in the future. Many dollars of theirs. And that's what I was asking. Very simple. I budgeted million dollar projects for forty years. You have to have a number.
They're looking for a projected number.
Yes.
We can't start moving money.
I'm talking about, you have to know what goal we're, we're trying to hit before we start moving money.
I got it. I can answer that.
Sure.
So. Kelly and I had started working up a, we're working on a cost estimate sheet to see. So that we could come up with our own projected numbers for fixing the water, um, problems in the sewer. That, I can't do that overnight and I apologize that we haven't done that. But we have been working on water leaks and wells. I know that everything is moving in the right direction. And so it seems like everything can be happening all at once. We have not done that. We are now moving into this line of coming up with a cost sheet. Of how, what we think the projected cost of something would be so that we could ask council to do that. We did not have that number for this budget season. Because again, we have a letter from V D H and we did not know that we were gonna get the well up and running in time to do that. And it was a two-year period projected that we would not be able to do new lines or do anything. So our fixing of our lines was just that. We were gonna put money in there, which is what we did to repair any lines that were needed and necessary. We are working on a cost sheet that will allow us to do a projection of cost and expense for a line replacement or whatever else. And again, it's just us looking at past expenses and coming up with a number. I would have to go get quotes in order to ask for the money. But if I get quotes, that means I would just get it re-appropriated. I can't, I can go get quotes, but next year the quotes won't be the same because they'll be higher, but at least we'll have something. And that's where we are.
Um, another thing that I would like to add is that when I, you know, said, what, you know, I said about this was. Uh, I didn't think ninety thousand was enough, um, and so that we need to add to the budget. That's what you're talking about. But I wasn't expecting the well to come in so quickly and for it to, you know, essentially double in size. And so the projected income is like another ninety thou- not income, it's not income. It's, it's a savings of what we're paying out now will be another ninety thousand dollars a year. So that will stay in the budget. And, um, it seems that Louisa has been overcharging us on our contract. And so that will, um, be, you know. Okay, so hopefully we will all get a lower rate. So between those two, we should get, um. You know, additional non-expenses out of our water budget that will bring in maybe another hundred thousand doll- or keep a hundred thousand dollars. Adding to our repairs of the ninety. So we're up to almost two hundred thousand dollars now. That's a significant amount of money compared to ninety. So we've done nothing and have gotten almost to two hundred thousand. So our budget is up. Just from circumstances that have nothing to do with anything we've done between the last meeting and this meeting. Good fortune. We don't get that a lot and I'm grateful for it. So I think it's, it's kind of, you know, now we're like. You know, we would, we could come up with projects and do the numbers. But right now, all that I've been thinking of in the emergencies are covered by this good fortune. And so that's. Kind of where we are. And we've all come together to do this, but I don't know what, I don't know that we need to shift money now. I think real soon, um. This plan is covered and that, um, has covered what we do. And that we, you know, Miss Betty is gonna be looking for additional grant money for us for other wells or other projects. And Nicole wrote these grants for us and she can continue to do that. And so I think that's a really good plan and I don't.
I think that's, I think if we start shifting money now, we put. A, a lump sum of money into a whatever account, right? So when a line breaks or a meter breaks, that money is now shifted to the water repair. General fund. Then the town manager can spend it on that stuff, not saying that's a bad thing because we need to spend it on that stuff. But if we take from other funds and we start shortending the other funds in the town to repair a. Cost we have no idea of. Then we run the same risk of like last month's meeting, as Becky mentioned. Trying to sign a hundred and sixty thousand dollars when a hundred and sixty thousand dollars going to the holes under the concrete. And saving that waste. I think that we need to be more specific in how we allocate money. As Nicole has now said over the times. As we get to the project. What is the project gonna cost? Where are we gonna find the money? A lot of money is gonna be generated from not blowing it out of the sewer or buying it from Louisa. So we're gonna have that pad in our account to be able to cover these repairs as they are, as they approach in the pecking order. And I'm not saying I disagree that we need to know, is it gonna be ten million or is it gonna be a million? So I think, no, I'm not. And I'm not gonna finish speaking. But if we let the staff put together their projected cost analysis, then we have an idea of what we're looking at. And these are trained professionals who can put those numbers together for us with the resources sitting at the end of our table. So I think we need to be patient and let the staff do its job. I think if we start moving money around today, tonight, all we do is create more confusion. That's just my opinion.
I wasn't asking. I asked a similar question.
Right.
We're gonna, we have to.
And that's that I don't disagree with getting a cost projection. But you can't base a con- projection today on what we're gonna spend next year. And we don't know how much money we're gonna generate from our water.
Did we not? Vote on budget last week for the next year? Do we, Kelly, do we know that we're gonna spend all that money on that budget next year?
No, we don't know.
No, we don't. But it helped to know a little bit of information about why you're establishing line items about what a projected cost might be, correct?
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
It's very interesting.
And, may I make a suggestion?
What was your suggestion?
Pay Hank's company to do a preliminary estimate on water and sewer projects. So that we have to know what kind of goal we're looking at.
Oh, well, I'm not paying Hank's company. Hank gives me quotes and we use Hank as a contractor because he's under the cooperative contract with Louisa. So he does provide me quotes. I question some of the quotes. Hank and I have conversations about them. Because we're trying to save the town money. At the same time, we're trying to make sure that we're doing the right job. And the right job is done. And for some reason, I feel like this is.
Maybe that's the stuff, the stuff where you don't, you don't need to be paid for doing estimates.
No.
I don't do that. It's the same way. My brother does all thing and that, and being on that subject, Nicole already knows it, but. I'm gonna clarify to all of y'all. Being a Worth County contractor. And that we give Nicole a budget number on a project. If she asks me, I give her a budget number. That budget number considers everything as we buy all the materials, we pay the asphalt contractor, everything. That's, I thought all the time use the high side budget number, okay? You use the high side of that number, then when you get, she gives me the go ahead to do the project. We do it by our hourly rates. We buy all the materials we've got in the town, set up with accounts, through all the suppliers. So we don't mark any of the materials up. We make zero off the materials. All we build for is machine time and labor. And every budget we've come in on, y'all always come underneath for the budget, considerably. So that's the same way we do it for any big project for the water authority. Same way we do it for the town Louisa, when we've done projects for them and everybody's happy. You know, because when you're doing repairs and you're doing stuff, you're gonna run into stuff. You don't plan on it. And it's just the nature of the business. It's not new installs. You got utilities to work around, all that stuff, you know, roads to close. It's different than doing the fourteen houses water and sewer where you're in the wild open field. You didn't have utilities, didn't have traffic control, that kind of stuff, you know? So that's, and, and the budget, that hundred and sixty thousand was sixty thousand to replace the manhole. And that has to be a pump around because all the town's sewer goes through, that's the last manhole the town is responsible for going to the county pump station down here. So we have to set up pumps and do a pump around while we have the line blocked off to pull that manhole and set the new one in. Plus, we have to clear some of the right of way to get up in to the next manhole where we gotta set the pumps up. Then the hundred thousand was to clear the right of way from Louisa Avenue all the way down to that manhole. And dispose of all the debris, haul it all away and seed and straw it. So that in the future, the town could budget Tri-State to come in and refurbish those manholes. Because Tri-State can't get in there with their stuff to refurbish the manholes unless they can get their equipment in there. So that was what the hundred thousand budget was. And that's one of the critical lines because there's numerous manholes that I think at times I've shown Nicole the pictures of infiltration when we get a lot of rain. So that was one of the areas to hit that the manholes hadn't been done. So, you know, and then Nicole works with me on projects. I get her a budget number. And what she does with the budget number as far as turning it over to you, that's her decision as the town manager when she feels it's time to turn it over to y'all. But, you know, in discussion with her, we felt the well was the main priority. And we had plenty of work to do. So. In our discussion, it was, that's just hold off on the manhole replacement. You know, I keep an eye on it and make sure it's not anything hanging up in the trough and it, that causes blockage. And we go from there. I mean, we got, we're. A year behind on stuff that's gotta be done by the end of this year for the town Louise. So, you know. Me.
And I'm sorry, you don't.
This is.
Your windows are open.
Okay. Out of the seats, right?
Say something? At our last meeting, Dave came here and told us we're losing eight thousand dollars a month on the sewer. That needed to be fixed. That's what you had told him that we're losing eight thousand dollars and that came up to like ninety thousand a year.
That was, that was an original, that was an original figure when Tommy Ronnett was water and sewer committee chairman. And we first evaluated all the manholes for them and then they started doing repairs. And I never heard a figure back. On that.
Right.
And Dave and I didn't have the conversation to be telling him eight or nine thousand dollars.
He was.
That did not come from me.
Yeah, well, he said, Hank, he had talked to Hank. So I'm just going by what's that, we can go back and look at the meeting and we can see what was said.
I'm not worried about it.
No, I, I mean, I'm just telling you, that's where I, I got alarmed.
That was, that was the original number. That was before.
I got, I was alarmed because I thought we're losing ninety thousand dollars a year. And if we've been doing ninety thousand dollars a year, I mean, that's a million dollars we probably lost in ten years or whatever.
But now we.
But that's not, that's not true for you.
No, we have the metered numbers, we have the costs.
So that's what we were looking for in the budget if we were talking back. We were looking for a hundred and sixty thousand, which we still need, but.
It's twelve thousand.
It was a, an emergency as far as I was concerned. Because we were losing so much money a month. And now that we see that's not true, then.
It's still twelve thousand a year, but it's not hundred some thousand a year. And that started with Jarvis.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not alarmed now like I was last week, a week, well, last.
I remember it was.
Because that was, you know, when I start, I was going, wait a minute, this is ridiculous. That's why I jumped on the snake when I got home. I blamed him too. So, you know. We gotta get our backs straight before we come in our meetings.
We started last. We started last year when I started, we, and Michelle took over as utility chair, we had to do the grant for the lead and copper. We jumped right in with VRWA and started looking at all the water, both sewer and. Clean water and dirty water and looking at everything that's going on in the town. And the focus was to fix the water leaks. And we didn't focus on anything else. We had, it was two people in the office, you know, we had D and B, we had everything and all this stuff going on. I understand that we wanna get a lot of this stuff fixed immediately. But we're at such a good place right now and we can't fix everything in one year. We do need to plan it out, but we can't plan it out until we understand where we are. We had to fix our leaks so we knew how much water we were losing and how much water we could save. So we would be paying Louisa for water. We had to fix all of that. We had to then look at, we got a letter from BDH, we got grants to do our well, we needed source water. I'm saying the same thing that I've already said, but these are the steps that we're taking and it's only been a year and a few months. And we have fixed all of our leaks except for a few. And we've gotten our well to sit ready to be active again, that's gonna provide us water in a year. That was done in less than six months. So I feel like we're moving in the right direction and to Dave's point, I, yes, absolutely, we need to start putting project numbers in the budget. But I couldn't do that last year and nor could I do that for this budget season. Because I did not know our well was going to be up and running at this moment and I knew that our sewer was not. That much of a priority, even though it was a priority, because I had been communicating with Pam at the Water Authority, I understood the process. So I did not focus on that because we had to get our source water. So if we want to try to fix one of these, we can. Right now, it would be the manhole. If you wanna do that, put money towards it. But he has quoted a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I'm trying to figure out why, how we can do it a little bit cheaper. Because you do have to put concrete around your manholes so that you do not continue to get infiltration. It has to be protected. And we have to do that. But this was on our project list. Once we get established with our budget, once we see where our numbers are, once we know what our revenue is. We would put two or three projects on depending on what we could afford. We don't have leaks to fix anymore because majority of them are fixed. We had one water main leak. Last year, we had multiple at this time. So we've saved money.
Any other questions for Nicole? I'm sure you had another guest, but you don't want to.
I do, Alex, that's in the middle there.
Hi, Alex, we're gonna do a.
He does asset management, right? And what else?
Yes, that will open you to GIS.
He's gonna come here and help us with. GIS and to, which is just basically map our, um. Our lines and our manholes, maybe even our cemetery foot onto. Uh, the GIS so that you can see them on the computer relative to our town and it's a very exciting. So, um, so he's gonna help us move that. He's been with us, he and Ken have been with us for quite a while. Does anybody have water questions or any questions about the town or concerns that you have or? Anything that you wanna know, that you wanna ask the water us first that, I mean, they really are here for us.
So what's your system? Can that identify? Weak ones in our system that might need repairs so that we can be looking at a, of. For the, of a cap improvement, um.
I've seen it highlighted where it's red, yellow and green, red for the worst areas, yellow. Not so good areas and green for the best area.
Do you just do it by date or you just condition?
One inspection.
Yeah, and you keep notes in your GIS system and you, you have a reporting situation where you can determine what is. Uh, what, you know, when was the pipe laid, when was it repaired, how many repairs does that have on it? We're really keeping, I mean, you have to update the information in the system. Um, and it can do conditional so that it shows you green, red or yellow to know what you need to do.
You can do that from your smartphone or do you need anything in particular, a special piece of equipment?
Sure, I've never got it from a smartphone personally.
You do it from a laptop?
Tablet, laptop.
Tablet.
Alright, tablet, okay. So like if we want Hank to update us, he's doing stuff, we can give it a little tablet or a tablet for our office.
I don't know. Um, I guess for the next step with the well is find. Operational calls, capital improvement, early next five years, what y'all do. Five year plan, if you're planning for a little growth, that's fine, just growth.
Find our operational costs.
If you're fortunately. You know, if you have another well, you know, and five is up and running. You know, they say one month we'll use well five and the next month we'll use well four. You know, to keep it, you know, going where you're not putting so much pressure on stuff. So again, it takes a continued of absolute.
They actually have a question because, um, I've had to replace my pool pump and I got a question on pumps. I had a regular electric pump. Before I, um, have, have the one replaced and the one I have right now is a magnetic pump. Which actually saves me money. Um, do we know if there's any magnetic pumps that are out there that we could possibly use versus? Um, ones that. Um, use electricity majority of the time.
Phone the well?
I don't think you'd wanna do that.
Why not?
Uh, I, you definitely know how reliable they are.
No, they're awesome.
And I mean, the, you, Mr. Robert, Rob, Mr. Royal, Robert Royal, who does it, he's recommended. Um, a pump to use for the well.
Okay, I was just wondering.
But I don't know, it, you could ask him. I mean, if they know, they could tell you, but you could ask him.
Yeah, and I don't know what that material is. With the magnet we put it down, you know, the other.
They do use electricity, they do use the name.
They do use some electricity.
Yeah, they do, it, it's a recovery thing. It's just like them water. They've got a regeneration at the wheels, you know, for the power and it goes back into it. So it cuts your power usage that way. Right now, I don't believe there's any on. It'll have that size to go, like a pumping situation. Right now, uh, three face, which is what you've got, is, is the cheapest. Uh, because what it essentially does, it's like a cube root, if you know a little about math. It's actually less than a third of the power to run that as opposed to if it's two forty volt. So.
I was just wondering, because I mean, it, it brought down my electric bill during the summer daytime.
It will, yes. Um, but as far as I know, there's no large diameter pumps that. You know, we can talk about pushing a lot ahead. Uh, so for instance, you know, your pools technically pretty much fill it at most, you're probably pushing five psi ahead. Uh, your, your well pump is pushing.
Right now, according to this, we had a hundred and sixty eight feet pushing somewhere around, um. Yeah, it'll be somewhere around seventy, seventy feet ahead.
Well, I was just wondering if they made them that big so they would do it. So that's the only reason I was asking because if. If they did, I know it'd cost a little extra to buy one, but in the long run, it would save money as well.
Right now, the. And they're about to cross the running cost issue yet. It, it, uh, it'll actually save my newer pump over. Building pumps. Also the resistance on the windings, they were a little bit, they were a little bit, uh, high. So the new wires are more having a.
My other question on that would be then, um, to, uh, in order to try to save money, um. Putting solar panels, uh, with a, uh, charge station there so that we're not constantly using. Um, uh, we can be off grid at times.
Your initial cost for that is, is going to be quite high, uh, to provide that much power. And if you, uh, see each of your, each of your solar panels is somewhere between, uh, twenty four to forty eight volts. And so you can just start calculating that up and just seeing how many, how many kilowatt hours you're gonna need to. To charge and batteries. Um, it's doable, but it's also very high cost right at the moment. Most people just use backup generator. And so in your, in your cost analysis, you're going on, you have a backup generator as part of your PPR.
But one of the things you said some moments ago is that. You believe we have the least expensive pump in the well at the moment?
Well, it's a three phase, that's what it says. And yes, that's, that's correct. It's the. It's going to be the cheapest, uh, pump to operate. Uh, the newer, the newer pumps. Have a bit better rating as far as, um, efficiency rating, you know, they jump up from about. Well, the older pumps are running somewhere in eighty percent efficiency and you get closer to ninety percent efficiency and then the. And then the, the next phase of that is the, or the next step up is what they call a, uh, BFT, variable frequency product. And that's your next step up. And that actually, it's a funny thing. It takes AC voltage, converts it to DC. Flains it up, then buries the frequency and so you can run your, you don't have to run your pump it. You know, all the way and it gives you plenty of headroom too. So you can ramp up and get more efficiency, you know, closer to ninety percent efficiency. And also you can run it and change it up depending on peak hours of power charging. You know, peak hours during the summer, you know, afternoons, you know, when everybody's trying to run their air conditioner. Then there, then the power company allows to charge you a whole lot more. So if you're running the pump in the morning. Or early in the mornings, uh, when it's off peak hours, then. You save a lot more there too, but that ought to be programmed. So these are just more steps that you can take. Um, you know, to increase your, your efficiency of everything as it runs. But I would suggest sticking with what he's suggesting, with the oil production company is suggesting. Just because, you know, you don't need to have that overhead room, right? And plus your capacity of your tank and your pipes won't handle that full on. You know, production. You've been wasting water. You know, and it's nice to keep it, uh, in not preferred if you can, as long as you can. Especially with droughts coming up, just about everybody experienced droughts last year. So with this rain, I don't know, see what happens, you know? Um, but that's just my suggestion.
Anybody else have any question?
Oh, and I had one more then, too. Um, to the fact that you decreased by fixing leaks. Then you go from like thirty five percent water loss down to about seventeen.
Fifty to thirty, fifty to thirteen.
Yeah, see, fifty seven or something.
You said we were the worst, we like over fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
We're at thirteen point six.
Yeah.
Remember, uh, Walton Park was just like, like.
Oh, yeah.
So all those little hydrants, they're all again.
Yeah, he got a cutoff valve put in there and everything to, we can cut that off.
Or that probably saved us a portion.
Sure, I think so.
You know something funny?
What's that?
That big valve that that day that we had to do that bypass around it because it was broken?
Yeah.
You know, it pushed that valve and they started getting water back through it again?
Oh, my gosh, the pressure, yeah.
It must have, it must have been, I must have run the spud out some, even though it snapped it off.
Yeah.
It opened up because they had water at one time. Shouldn't have water, it was small ones.
Yeah, yeah.
They had pressure.
Well, I've been there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So that's something that if that well ever gets. Back in operation, that's gonna have to be fixed.
Yeah, you put a new.
We're gonna have to put a new big valve and it always means we'll have to go up the street and put that inline, shut it off.
Didn't you say that what was the cost on that?
It was a.
Twenty five thousand dollars.
Something like that to do that inline.
Yeah, so it's.
But that's all we can do because they don't have a valve.
They wanna shut off everybody.
Right, right.
They end up after hot things.
Yep, so.
Alright, folks, any other questions?
Did, did, the one question I had, did he say, I know he can't tell, I mean, that would be like asking me a question. On the age of that pump. My, my concern would be, and, and you may channel in and tell me your thing, but this. Professional standpoint, I'm not a well person, but. Before we get it cranked back up in an operation full time. Should, should we be looking at maybe having them put a new pump in? Since that well's gonna be our main, you know?
He said the wells, it's, the pump that's in there is good for two to four years, so I was gonna put it in.
Okay.
Request to get it put in in about year three.
Okay. I just wanted.
I mean, we can put it in whenever, but he's gonna keep an eye on it. He doesn't, he doesn't, it's not necessary at this time, he said.
Okay, alright, I was just thinking, so we've been down so long, if we get it up and going and then it goes down. Six months from now, you know, we're gonna be down on, so. And just, and just so on that, it was brought up about that vault and how that water comes in from the county. The way it's set up is some water always flows in from the county. But the way those check valves and stuff are inside of that vault, when it needs it, it lets the water come through. But the booster pump is set up on auto so that as the sensors tell it. That's when the booster pump will kick on to force more pressure to the tank. So when our well is up and running, a lot of times we're not getting hardly anything from the county when the well is working like it's supposed to.
So in looking at our data. I believe it looked like we have been buying water from the authority for ten years or more. At a large amount, consumption amount. So the well wasn't being maintained the way it should have been. And I don't know what the readings were, but we have been purchasing water from them.
And we'll be able to get one that well gets back up and going. I got, there's a new, I replaced that meter to the new.
Yeah.
Electronic style meter. So we'll be able, what I used to fall down was take the reading every week. On it. And that'll tell us how many gallons we're actually as pumping through that meter in a week's time.
And we need to check and just make sure that at the vault, that, that those sensors are working correctly. Because if the well was producing water, why were we purchasing so much water? Do you see like if the sensors are messed up, then it's not.
Well, I just had that storm and it knocked that, that thing we found out from James.
Mm-hmm.
That he had to reboot.
The tank.
And I asked him, I said, James, I said, I have a question. Why is the tower all the way full now? And it overflowed, but yet we thought the county couldn't get our tower full, but now it's full. And he said, oh, that's because the setting was such and such. And then I said, can you go on there and change it? So it fills that tower up more because we've been operating on thirty six percent, forty max. You know, so get it up there, like Nicole shared earlier, like seventy five or so. We just don't want it overflowing out on the ground being we're buying the water. But, you know, so he's, he's working on that because he said that's a fine line trying to adjust that because. The tower, you don't know when the tower truly is all the way empty unless I shut the valve and dump the tower complete. So he said by going by the ball on the outside, you can still have two feet or so of water in that tower. So he said. You have to play with those adjustments to get it where we want, so.
So does the quote from. Is it?
Royal.
Kinda screwed up, kinda wanna call it Kings. But, uh, does that cover checking the sensors and making sure the tower is okay or?
No, this is just the well. This is just the well. We have a tower contractor, that's.
That we can read, you know, I mean, go over what it is that we want maybe to do. Is there a project that should run simultaneous so that when the well is working, we know the tower is reporting properly? Or it's already being done?
It's already, so the tower is reporting properly now that we have it rebooted. We didn't know what the problem was and we couldn't, we didn't know who to contact. It's already, so the tower is reporting properly now that we have it rebooted. We didn't know what the problem was. We couldn't, we didn't know who to contact. The company that was doing, um, the environment system, they were sold, bought, sold, and we didn't know. And so Hank found that James was a guy he would talk to. And so when I got his contact, I emailed him and he explained the whole history behind this, um, system and how it operated. So he, they rebooted the system and the tank is working. So as long as the tank is working, he is gonna replace the transducer. Um, but as long as the tank is working, there's nothing to be done with it then, yeah.
Awesome. Any other questions, folks? Well, before I take the motion to adjourn, I wanna thank our guest speakers, uh, all four of our guest speakers. Uh, it's been enlightening us and, and kind of informing us of where we need to be and what we need to do. Uh, we really appreciate you coming out, especially in the mid-storm. I also wanna thank our staff for putting together, you know, the plan and, and just being able to walk through what's happening on the town. I will entertain motion to adjourn. A second.
A second.
We are done. See you next week.